Good evening. Welcome to all our esteemed candidates and valued members of the community. Really appreciate you being here this evening. I'm Allison Thompson, the President and CEO of the Economic Development Alliance for Jefferson County, Arkansas. And I'm saying welcome on behalf of the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce. It's my privilege to welcome you to the 2024 Pine Bluff Mayor and City Council Democratic Forum. Special thanks to the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff for hosting us here this evening in this wonderful building and this perfect venue for our forum. Really appreciate them. We're grateful for their partnership and the UAPB Student Government Association for their active involvement and help pulling this together, showcasing the enthusiasm of our future leaders. To our members, your commitment to the growth and the prosperity of Pine Bluff is commendable, and your presence adds value to this forum. And thank you to our sponsors for making the forum possible. Blue Ink Real Estate, Beyond Clean Janitorial, Express Employment Professionals, Mark and Nancy Allen, Scott Systems Heating and Air, Southeast Arkansas College, Strong Manufacturing Company Incorporated, and Wingstop of Pine Bluff. And to all of you watching on the UAPB YouTube channel, hello and thank you for tuning in. I will now call up the UAPB Student Government Association President Trent Wells to the podium.
Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests, members of the Pine Bluff City Council, distinguished mayor candidates, faculty, students, and guests. I am Trent Wells and I proudly serve as the Executive Student Government President of the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff. It is an honor to welcome you to the Pine Bluff City Council Mayor and Mayor Candidate Forum hosted by Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce and the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff Student Government Association. This event marks a pivotal moment in our city's journey towards progress and prosperity. As the Student Government Association Executive President, I stand before you today with immense pride in our community's commitment to civic duty and the democratic process. The forum serves as a platform for meaningful conversations where ideas and our exchange visions are shared and the future of Pine Bluff is shaped. Tonight, we have the opportunity to hear from dedicated individuals who seek the city and lead the city forward, their willingness to serve and their passion for the Pine Bluff exemplified life of spirit of leadership and the responsibility that we hold dear. Once again, welcome to our university and the Pine Bluff City Council Mayor Candidates and City Council Candidates. May tonight's discussion inspire us, challenge us, and ultimately lead us towards a brighter future for Pine Bluff. Next, I would like to introduce you to tonight's forum moderator, Matt Mosler of New Light Church. I will now turn it over right over to Matt. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trent. It's good to know our future's in good hands, amen?
Amen.
Yeah. Nicely done. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna raise the microphone. I don't do that very often. So let me tell you a little bit, in your seats right now, everybody should have a program. And in that program, we do have the candidate forum guidelines. You can read through those guidelines. I am gonna highlight a few of them before we get started. Before we got started, candidates drew their numbers to determine the order in which they will be seated on the stage. We've allowed about an hour and a half of this forum. It's broken into two sessions. The first half of this forum will be the city council candidates. The second half will be the mayoral candidates. Each candidate will get, city council candidates will get four questions, mayoral candidates, five questions. There will be no opening remarks. There will be a two-minute time for closing remarks, however. Now, to determine which candidate responds to questions first, we have timekeepers. They're gonna draw the name, we're gonna draw the name of the candidate at random here in just a moment. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. The chamber and the red coat volunteers will serve as timekeepers. They will ring a bell when the candidate has fifteen seconds remaining. It sounds like this. Nicely done. The bell will be rung again at one minute, and the candidate must cease talking. The moderator will immediately call on the next candidate to begin his or her response. Now, if the candidate asks to repeat the question, that actually is gonna count against their time, as will audience applause. So do respect each and every candidate up here. Questions from the floor will not be allowed. And once again, we will have about two minutes of closing remarks at the end of this. I would like to take an opportunity now to introduce all of our candidates. All the way down at the end, we have Lloyd Holcov Jr. Following Lloyd, we have... Alright, we got Mr. Bruce Lockett. Where's Bruce? Alright. Next to Bruce, we have Mr. William Fells. Next to William, we have Kenneth Gray Senior. Next to Kenneth Gray Senior, we have Marlette Bowles. Next to Marlette, right here, we have Glenn Brown Senior. And all the way at the end, we have Martavius Proctor. Give them each and every one of them a big round of applause. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna draw a name at random, and this will be the candidate who will start first. The next question will be to their right, and then we will go back and meet that candidate when we will start the second question. Draw the candidate's name. Trump roll, please. We're gonna start with a candidate who is not here. The next one will be Mr. Bruce Lockett. I now have the questions that have been in this hermetically sealed envelope. I'd also like a shoulder massage with it. It is hermetically sealed. Alright, Mr. Lockett, we're gonna start with you. Your first question for tonight, Pine Bluff has struggled with population decline and urban blight. How will you work to revitalize neighborhoods and improve the overall quality of city infrastructure, specifically street repairs and code enforcement? I'll tell you that question again. Pine Bluff has struggled with population decline and urban blight. How will you work to revitalize neighborhoods and improve the overall quality of city infrastructure, specifically street repairs and code enforcement?
Well, specifically, I would like to organize our neighborhood into neighborhood associations and also create advisory boards for our code enforcement and maybe our street department and get citizen input on the priorities in their specific communities that need to be addressed by the city. And the other thing that we have to do to solve much of the plight and the infrastructure problem with the streets is we gotta put some funding toward that. In that effort, I will be asking the city to come up with a five-year capital improvement plan that will include an analysis of all of our current revenue streams and their allocations to see if there are some revenue streams that we can divert to our street department. Okay, so that's, so the capital improvement plan would really be about analyzing our revenue and also prioritizing our capital improvement projects. And streets, lightings, and our parks should be a priority.
Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, William, your turn. How will you work to revitalize neighborhoods and improve the overall quality of city infrastructure, specifically, street repairs and code enforcement?
Well, one of the things I believe we need to be doing here in Pine Bluff is developing a municipal cleaning team. So these will be some workers, and they will mow certain routes, keep them clear of litter and debris. I know the county has cleanup operations that work on weekends. I think we need to preserve that. But there's so much trash in this community, we need that weekday coverage as well. And then, as a council member, I'll also take the initiative, it's what I did as a project coordinator for the city. Can I look to these neighborhoods myself with my work boots in my car? Let me mark out where the lights are out so that we can get those reports and the street department and energy. Also, there's a lot of vacant properties. The city, we have a vacant property registry. But that code enforcement department, they need, you know, some help going out into the neighborhoods, marking some of these homes, getting that reported, and doing some of that labor. And so, that's some of the things I did as a project coordinator, and it's what I would be interested in doing if I'm elected to the city council. And then, I believe, is that my...
Yes.
And then also, you know, of course, we have this historic investment into our drainage system from the Arkansas Black Mayors Association. I want to support the mayor in making sure we get that implemented.
Alright, Mr. Fells, thank you so much. Mr. Gray?
As far as population, safety is number one. Nobody wants to move where you don't feel safe. And in the third ward, we have a safety managed communication system. Where if a crime happened or a shooter, we send out a text. Everybody in the third ward that registered with us will get it, know to lock the doors, what to move. Then I follow up when the threat is gone. For blight, then the west side, I think it's the hatred for blight. Abandon houses and the grass. But we need to hold the property owners accountable through their taxes, and we're doing that already. And for blight, I have a team in the third ward. We will cover X amount of streets, once a month on Saturday. Neighbors to bring it out, bring the trash out, and we will remove it for them. And for blight, land development, it's not good just to tear down a house, but you need to have a redevelopment plan to put something in place.
Alright, Mr. Gray, thanks so much. Ms. Bowles?
Thank you. I think first thing is budget. When we're looking at the budget, we need to make sure that we have enough staff to cover these issues that we're having. Also, make sure that we have the equipment and means to take care of some of these issues. Also accountability. We have certain departments already in place that should take care of these things, code enforcement and other. We need accountability with those departments to make sure that they're actually doing their job and following through. Also, creating programs for homeownership. Homeownership is gonna make our neighborhoods more stable. When you have stable homeowners, they tend to take more pride in their neighborhood, which will result in better results. And happy people and happy neighborhoods are gonna draw people here. So, that's my thought.
Alright, thanks so much. Mr. Brown? Same question. Different answer.
First of all, yes, first of all, the population, it's about us. It's about how we love our city, period. You know, and I would love to have seen a lot of people in the audience today from students because those are the ones that we really need to talk to by staying here in Pine Bluff. That's what I'm talking about. So that increases our population. The things that we don't have here, we would have if we had more people. But the college doesn't have more people and businesses. Basically, where we get a lot of people from, we get those college students who want to stay here. About the streets, we do all we can to budget the street department. I do understand that they have been a little underfunded this year. But, and then I think it's been so many years since we have overhauled or blacked out a lot of our streets. And at that point, we have a lot to do. And what you can't do a lot in one season because of the weather, the rain, the snows, whatever. But as far as the blight, the houses, we're working hard on code enforcement because we're working very hard on code enforcement right now. And they have a whole lot to do because there's so many houses, so many people have moved away. Their parents or their relatives that died, and those houses that's still there, so. We're working hard.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Proctor, same question.
Yes, as it addresses the population decline that we've seen in many years with Pine Bluff, especially since I've been here. I think one of the things that we are lacking is actually proposing initiatives that's geared towards providing citizens with a great quality of life. I believe that's the piece that we're missing in the city of Pine Bluff. Now, the quality of life is gonna address safety and then other things that people want to see in their city. And some of the initiatives I think the council should be looking at is actually working with the mayor and her executive team to propose legislation that's geared towards blight removal and litter prevention. And in my ward in particular, which is the fourth ward, one of the things I would propose is making sure that we have those community cleanups in place, not just a one-time thing, but making those consecutive, on a consecutive basis, where they happen more frequently. And then also making sure that as a city, propose initiatives that's geared towards second chance programs where they can ask people to come in and help clean up the community as well, so.
Alright, thanks, sir. Mr. Holcov?
Crime. Crime. That they have streets, that's issues of people moving away from here. I've been working with code enforcement, the street department, on getting blight removed, having, getting the streets paved. That's been an issue for a long time. On the way here, I've been in contact with our code enforcement director. Trash is being dumped, not only on the north side and the west side, but definitely on the east side. We have to work together with getting, with our code enforcement, our street department, and making our city look better. We do need the resources to help make our city look better, not only to keep our residents here, but also to draw more people to our city and more businesses to our city to make our city thrive. That's how we make our city progress. And so, as we need the resources, that will mean more legislation.
Alright. Okay, for question two, I would draw on the candidate. We'll start with that one first. And this candidate is Mr. Brown. So, Mr. Brown, question number two. What is your plan to hire and retain police officers? What is your plan to hire and retain police officers to improve community policing efforts and reduce crime rates in our neighborhoods?
Well, I do understand that the second part is the dashboard, how do we reduce crimes in the neighborhood? Because I think the police and the fire, of course, you did ask about the police. That is primarily up to the mayor to do the hiring than those departments. But I think we work with kids, we have programs in place. But working with kids will deter a lot of crime. And I did say in some time that perhaps having a family night where we talk to kids and parents will help a lot. Maybe that night they won't commit a crime or do something wrong, and it may move on to other days of the week. But the fire, the police, that's strictly the mayor and those departments that do the hiring. The chief of police is set up. So, not very much I can tell you about the police and how we can retain them. But I will say that paying them a little bit more money might help a lot.
Alright, thanks, sir. Martavius, I'll repeat the question again. It's what is your plan to hire and retain police officers to improve community policing efforts and reduce crime rates in our neighborhoods?
So I'm going to agree with Councilman Brown. That is not my place to actually hire them. However, what we can do as a council is propose different initiatives, maybe incentives, that draw in potential interest. And I believe I'm the only candidate up here that actually went through an internship program with the Pine Bluff Police Department. And one of the problems that we saw was the test. Now, our test is so outdated here in Pine Bluff that we have maybe ten officers that's wanting to join the Pine Bluff Police Department, but they can't get past that test because you gotta have a certain percentage of hire. Now, they can go to Little Rock, and then they take this, a similar test that draws in their interest employment, and they pass that exam. They just decide to stay in Little Rock and be an officer there. So we do need to look into that as being a way to incentivize officers to not just, you know, come to Pine Bluff, actually reside in the city of Pine Bluff. And they will also eliminate it from a pay scale. We do need to pay our officers more as a criminal justice major from this university. That was a good aspect to look at, and that drove my decision to stay in Pine Bluff.
Alright, thanks, sir. Mr. Holcov?
Yes, sir, that's a very big question. Do you hire and retain police officers? We are facing a dilemma where we train police officers, but they leave here and go for better-paying jobs. We must pay our public safety officers a better-paying salaries, and we must equip them. It's up to the mayor and council to promote and get these officers here for our city for public safety. So that comes with looking and going around and seeing what other cities in the state are offering to better police officers and doing what we can to, not only to recruit, but also to retain and keep these valuable resources to protect and preserve our city. So we need to have that legislation in place and the resources to keep those officers here.
Alright, thanks, sir. Mr. Lockett?
Yes, I'm gonna go in a different direction, guys. I think we can spend ourselves into bankruptcy trying to get the salary of our police up to, say, Little Rock. My solution to this problem about retaining officers is to work smarter, not harder. And what I mean by that is to leverage technology and non-uniform employees to take some of the pressure off the uniformed police, that they won't have to answer so many calls. And some of the work that is done to catch criminals can be done by non-uniform people, say, monitoring, say, CCTV, or some other type of camera system, where we're not using a lot of uniformed people, and they using a lot of manual. So that's my solution, is technology and utilizing non-uniform personnel.
Alright, thanks, sir. Mr. Fells?
One of the things that I was able to do as a special projects coordinator is to organize job fairs. And at one of the job fairs, we were so proud to see a busload of students from the local high schools come out, and they were visiting the tables. And two of those were our police and fire tables. So that's one way that the city can recruit more officers, is to get into these schools and start cultivating it at a young age. And then I also wanna focus on the second part of that question is, in all honesty, we can't just look to the police department to reduce crime in this neighborhood. It's the responsibility of parents and educators and all of us as a community. That's why one of the things I would do is support the group violence intervention program. It's about getting into these schools, visiting these homes, and connecting people with social resources that they need to avoid a life of crime. And then I also want us to address as a community, you know, quality of life. Because, you know, the pay is one thing, but potential police officers, they also look at the quality of the housing in the neighborhoods when determining whether I'm gonna go to Pine Bluff or Little Rock. So let's get into our neighborhoods and repair our streets and street lighting, things like that.
Mr. Gray?
Back in the seventies, there was a song, "Money, Money, Money." That's what it is. Money to increase their salaries. Money to increase bonuses. Give them incentives, or whatever incentives we could supply them and their family if they can get some type of, with tools from the community. And for, as our officer, the third ward has a plan we're gonna initiate and make that with our officers, we would take some of the pressure off of them by communicating with them, telling them things that's going on in the neighborhood. Everybody keeps everything and gives it to me. So we have a plan for our youth at rescue in the third ward that the police are gonna have to stop them on the corner every day because they're not in school.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Bowles?
Thank you. I think we definitely need a culture change. Here, being in the neighborhood, I grew up on the north side, and the police, the police and citizens, they did not have a great relationship of communication. Recruiting is vital. If we're not finding people local, we need to go further to recruit people that want to actually do the job. It's just like teaching. You have to have a passion and want to do it. And if you're not finding those people, you're gonna constantly find rotating people. Proper coverage. If they're always short, who wants to work and do that? If you're working long hours, who wants to work and do that? You have to find, to have a culture change and recruit people who actually want to do those jobs. You gotta rebuild morale and relationships with the citizens. And finally, proper pay, proper pay raise steps. From my understanding, the police department has a long period of time before they have raises and initiatives. We have to fix that.
Thanks so much. Alright, question number three. We're gonna start with Mr. Gray. Question number three, Mr. Gray, the Go Forward Pine Bluff Initiative recently failed at the polls. What alternative plans do you propose to move the city forward?
The first thing we need to look at is retention, then expansion. We need to retain the businesses that we have here. And then, expansion, we're gonna have to work with the smaller, when there was a set of t-shirts and things like that, to move those businesses forward. If we can get enough little small shops, shops of business in a certain area... I'm sorry, business in a certain area, to get together, put their tent up, we can start growing that. But we can't lose the business that we got now. It's gonna be retention and expansion and doing them both at the same time.
Alright, thanks, sir. Ms. Bowles?
I'm gonna make my answer very, very simple. Working on self. Working on self. Working on self and creating, working with what we already have currently. Working on the people we already have, working on the neighborhoods we already have. I've lived in several states over the last twenty years, and nobody encouraged me to go there. It was a happy, healthy situation that they had going on, the dream, into wanting to live there. So as long as our citizens are happy and they take pride in where they live, other people will come. You don't have to go searching for them. They will come. And also, bringing businesses here, sometimes it's a little bit difficult to start because if you wanna start a business and you get cut off because of zoning or definitions like that, it's discouraging. So working with the citizens in order to bring smaller businesses that will also retain people and make people want to take pride in starting the businesses and grow and be healthy here.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, pass the microphone in.
Thank you very much for that question. Of course, the audience already knows that I did not favor the Go Forward. And that image didn't fail twice, and it proved my point that the people realized that it was not a great tax. However, I'm not against tax. I'm not against a tax that the city and the city council make sure that everything goes in a transparent way. But however, the way we can do this without tax is that if we get more businesses or shopping areas, more eateries, then we will get the traveling of the nine counties that we support. We support the Grant Counties and all the counties. I use up too much time explaining that. But those people will come in and spend money that will be tax dollars with those tax dollars that will grow. By that growing, eventually, our population will grow, because we will become a city of destination. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Proctor?
And do you mind repeating that question as it were?
Question once again is, what is your plan to, excuse me, the Go Forward Pine Bluff Initiative recently failed at the polls. What alternative plans do you propose to move the city forward?
So let me just start off by saying, I don't think there will be any plan that I could propose by myself that would advance the city of Pine Bluff. I think what we're failing at as a city is everyone up here is having their own agenda. And it's like bringing the collaboration and teamwork that we need in order for Pine Bluff to thrive. So my role into being here like this as your next city councilman for the fourth ward will be actually to work with our mayor, work with the council, and work with any other entity that would, that has the plan to thrive, help Pine Bluff thrive. And my role is to basically advocate and make sure that in that plan, there's some type of form of youth investment, making sure that all of our citizens are thriving, they have opportunities to thrive, and making sure Pine Bluff is a safe and welcoming community.
Alright, Mr. Proctor, thank you. Lloyd?
Yes, sir, the Go Forward plan just failed. How do we proceed after that? Everybody must come to the table. That's the small business owners, that is the big business owners, that is everyone that is included in the city. That's the have, that's the have-nots, that's the rich, that's the poor, that's black, that's white, that's Latino. That's the only way that this city can move forward. After September, Go Forward is no longer at the drawing table. Yes, it has failed twice. The city has spoken, the people have spoken. So we must move forward. This city must come together. I can't do it by myself. The council cannot do it by themselves. The city must do it together. That's small business owners, that's big business owners, that's the citizens of Pine Bluff. I cannot do it by myself. We must do it together as a city. If not, we'll continue to be in this circle that we are in now, going around and around.
Mr. Holcov, thank you. Mr. Lockett?
Yes, I believe what we need to do as quickly as possible is mobilize the whole community in a planning process that includes all the stakeholders, UAPB, CR, the county, the city, the school districts, the nonprofit organizations, and get all these people around the table and have them discuss progress as they see it. And from these discussions, we drill down the ones that we can fund, the ones... And from these discussions, we drill down the ones that we can fund, the ones that will, will have the ultimate, uh, most participation. And come up with a planning process with a revenue, uh, stream that was supported. And put it before the people in, in any fashion that they see to uh, move us forward.
Thanks sir, Mr. Fells.
So a couple of years ago, the city had a whole lot of stakeholders, I mean, almost every organization came together and developed something called the Comprehensive Plan. And this is a comprehensive set of recommendations for advancing the city. And I think what we all need to do as a community is be more aggressive about, um, being knowledgeable about that plan and putting things in, um, action to actually implement it. For example, I'm glad that we're here at the university area because in that plan, it has a number of recommendations for how to revitalize this area. For example, we have to slow the traffic down in university drive, make it more, um, walkable. On either Fluke Street or Ricker Avenue, those are the places where we need to be concentrating, you know, commercial developments rather than university drive. And then it has, um, recommendations about the type of housing that we need in this area. We need mixed-use along university drive. So though, that's just an example of, um, recommendations that we've already received from very knowledgeable developers. And we've also got feedback from people here in the community. We have a plan, a comprehensive plan, let's all work together to, um, implement that.
Alright, thanks so much. Our final question of the night. We will start with Lloyd Holcomb Jr. Mr. Holcomb, our fourth, our fourth and final question for our city council candidates, Pine Bluff has assets such as the Arkansas River, regional parks, the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. How do you plan to leverage these assets for recreational opportunities and community development?
We have a gold mine here, as you just stated. We have to leverage these gold mines by working to bring these community peoples forward.
Arkansas River, regional parks, University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, for example.
We have the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, the historical Black College, regional parks. And say that in a-
Arkansas River.
Arkansas River. You have Waterway, you have Historic Black College, and you have parks. That can bring tourism, dollars, jobs, recreation to the city. You channel with those partners, I know I have fifteen seats, and you can bring communities and tourism, bring jobs, recreation, and economics. And you partner with community development to bring revenue to the city. That's how you bring jobs and tourism and community development to the city.
Alright, thanks sir. Let me repeat the question for everybody, just uh, so we don't have to take away from your time. Pine Bluff has assets such as the Arkansas River, regional parks, UAPB. How do you plan to leverage these assets for recreational opportunities and community development? Mr. Lockett.
Uh, well, I'm a task force type person, I think any problem can be solved by putting the people around the table that are necessary to hash out what you, uh, plan to do. I think a recreational tourism task force that is composed of CR, UAPB, the city, the county, and these, and other related entities, and put them around the table to see how can we develop the lake, the park system that we have here, the athletic programs of both CR and UAPB in a comprehensive fashion that would draw people to Pine Bluff.
Mr. Fells.
So going back to that comprehensive plan, and this, some of these assets is what we would call some of our anchor institution, our anchor assets, for example. So as a city, we have a responsibility to develop a relationship with people who are over these assets to make sure we are developing in partnership. I see our, um, chat, Alexander out there, and so for example, with, um, UAPB in that comprehensive plan, it talks about doing more, connect the campus to the, um, to Lake Saracen. And making it, you know, more walkable so students can walk directly from one to the, to another. If we do something like that, for example, then we're gonna have more traffic at that, um, lake environment. Then we can come in with things like paddle boats, or whatever the case may be. Uh, and then, you know, for example, around our hu- around our hospital, we have to work with them to make sure we are stabilizing, um, those neighborhoods. And then at some of our parks, we need to make sure that we are retaining and maintaining what we already have, a regional park. Let's do things to, um, you know, invest into like infrastructural improvements, a lot of that's been done, you know, throughout the past few years. But I think that's the role that the city has and, um, trying to capitalize on some of this stuff.
Alright, thanks sir, Mr. Gray.
I wanna focus on two parts of that, the river, the port, and tourism. Our company shipped paper and lodges for over forty years on the board. We lost some business because the port wasn't upgraded enough to take care of our needs. That business went to Little Rock. So truck transport from Little Rock to their bar in Little Rock. And so, as, as to that, that area needed to be FDA guidelines with my experience. So anything that's shipped out of there besides food grade. And tourism, I'm involved with genealogy, historical society, uh, at our local museum, I'm a big part of it. We have monthly meetings there. We had a lady come from England, she said, "This is the same display I saw three years ago." So we got the resources, we just need to upgrade and, uh, make it more attractive to people who wanna come here, do business, and for tourism.
Thanks sir, Ms. Bowles.
Thank you. Um, I do agree, uh, with the river being so close, transporting goods, if we had to upgrade the system, I think that would definitely help us here in Pine Bluff. UAPB, um, these are our future business owners. Um, we have tons of students completing their degree programs and leaving without that knowledge and information. I think we should develop some type of relationship with them to keep those people here, and I think that will definitely help us grow. The parks, uh, the parks that we have, we need to expand that into community. People love family gatherings, and we have tons of parks that can make that happen. We also can have sports programs that will also generate different communities outside of ours, which will also bring money here. And, and it'll also give families a chance to be together. Um, parks also promote tourism. Different events, concerts, different things like that will also bring people into the community with our, which will also bring money. And also parks and, uh, park programs also promote healthy things.
Alright, thanks so much, Mr. Brown.
I'm not gonna have enough time to answer this question, but I'm gonna do it very quickly, very, very quickly. And that is that, over the years, some of our past mayors have tried to make that bridge between UAPB and the city. It was working pretty good, it, since some, it's still working, I think it can be better. I think that the kids that graduate should have a job offer that's waiting on them. I remember when I graduated, six months before I got out of college, I had a job, I was already, oh, the Arkansas prison teacher. So that's, I think that we need to do that immediately to get those kids to stay and that will grow our population. However, um, the Arkansas River, I, I wanna say the port. I have mentioned to people that we ought to be a baby New Orleans. We have imports and exports in and out of Pine Bluff, we have industrial park that we could use. So those kinds of things is what helps the city to grow. I wouldn't think we could be a baby New Orleans. Also, I think that with the regional park, having more tournaments, fishing tournaments than just baseball or softball tournaments. I think that would aid too in our growth and our tax base, and that's the most important, our tax base, other people coming to our city and leaving tax dollars here.
Mr. Proctor.
Alright, so number one, we need to invest into those assets more. And then we also need to, on the other end, utilize them. Uh, when you look at the assets that Pine Bluff have, we have, um, a major highway that comes through the city, we have railroad, we have airport, and then we also have the Arkansas River. So that's four streams of transportation that we have to offer to businesses that want to come here and thrive. Uh, number, when I go back, I say utilization, we actually have to provide incentives for them to get those mainstream companies here. Uh, because I, a lot of people up here mentioned that when UAPB students leave, uh, UAPB, they have a job waiting for them. Well, the reality of that is, they do have a job waiting for them, but do they pay? So we want those companies to actually pay because that's what's gonna be the key factor for keeping those students and those, uh, people that we want here to work here, here in Pine Bluff. Uh, and when I say investing into those, we have to upgrade them more. We have to do, do better at promoting that we have these four major, uh, streams of transportation in our city.
Alright, thank you each and every one. I'm gonna, uh, now draw for our final segment, which, uh, each candidate will get two minutes to give a clothing, a clothing, a clothing statement. Who's, who are you wearing? A, a closing statement. And we are going to start with Mr. William Fells. Oh, and for your closing statement, you can come down to the podium, yes.
So, um, my name is William Fells, as he says. Um, so for the past four years, I've had the honor of working as a project coordinator here in Pine Bluff. Um, and I've been able to work with people to do things like organize cleanups, um, also coordinate an initiative called the Second Chance Program. This is with Tori, Katrina Hunter, um, our juvenile corps and CR. Uh, we went into the juvenile system, we reduced penalties for young people, they participated in classes and went out and picked up trash and things like that on weekends. I was also the project director for our initiative called the Advancing Young Literacy Program. And we gave out P3PBD health strategies and, um, other things to more than four thousand residents here, um, including educational classes. So, uh, these are some of the things, um, that are giving me experience, and there are some areas that I believe that, um, we need to improve, that we're gonna move Pine Bluff forward. And I believe, uh, I have the tenacity and experience to do that. Some of those things are, um, developing a cleaning team to clean up some of the routes here, um, overhauling some of our streets to stabilize these neighborhoods. Let's replace some of the outdated designs that we have, and also support our group violence intervention program. At the end of the day, I think all of us, we just want the same things. We just wanna live in clean neighborhoods that are safe where our families can find opportunity. And I believe that we can deliver some of those things through this, um, through initiatives like this. And so, I've never done anything good by myself, I've always worked with incredible people, like a lot of people I see here in this room now. So I hope to have the support of the ballot, but more importantly, over the next few years, I hope we'll work aside you as a team member because we all live here, we're all affected by the same issues, and we can, and Pine Bluff, a better place to live or provide opportunity. Thank you.
William Fells, thank you so much. Alright, Mr. Gray, you can come down to the podium.
So my name is Kenneth Gray. I'm a retired, approved, and then engineer for a year. I worked with multi-million dollar budgets over the years. My community involvement is under Jefferson County's Genealogy Director. Jefferson County Historical Board Member, Neighborhood Watch President, instructor at the Shepherd Center. I volunteer with skate racing to keep our kids safe and secure. We assist on a weekly basis our seniors and disabled to make sure we pick up their equipment, pick their water, we keep small home projects. We work with the, those that are sick to get their CBL and CDTNA. We deliver food boxes, I'm a local pastor, and I'm working to revitalize the park and the third ward. And if money wasn't involved, I would be the only one on stage for the third ward. I'm not in it for the incentive, I'm in it for compassion and love for our people. So I can show you what I have done, not what I will do. And we need to elect the next ward three candidate, not by their title, but by the truth that we bear. So where there's no business, Pine Bluff has. Where there's no business, the people have. Where there's no business, business, third ward has. I'm not running for a check, I'm running for change. I'm not running for a sheriff, I'm running to serve. I'm not running for the income, I'm running for the outcome. And the late saying looks like in a song, "I tell you, you don't have fun." Oh, yes, it will.
Ms. Bowles.
Hello, can anybody hear me? My name is Margaret Bowles, and I'm standing before you asking for your vote as the first ward alderman. I'm here mainly because of why all of you are here. You are concerned about the state of our city. Uh, I grew up here, I am not an outsider, I grew up on the north side of Pine Bluff. I've lived here, I've raised four children, and I have nine grandbabies. So I know how to work with a shoe string budget, okay? Uh, I also work for a, a nonprofit right now, and we balance million dollar budgets a year. So I'm versed along that. I think a lot of the voice right now is trust, um, on behalf of a lot of different departments. We need to sit down and take a real hard look at who represents you. Do you feel like you're being represented properly? Do you feel like you're being heard? That's why I'm standing here, because I didn't feel like I was being represented properly. So when you get ready to go to the polls, you think about that. If you feel comfortable with what the current administration has given you, well, if you want change with some new leadership at Pine Bluff, my name is Margaret. My name is Margaret Bowles, and I'm running in the first ward. I wish you would consider me when you get to the polls. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Brown.
Yes sir, on my way. And again, good evening. Um, I'm not gonna have enough time to do everything and say everything else, I'm just gonna try to sum it up very carefully for you. This is the book, when you don't know, you really can figure it out, this is the biblical book. I wanted to let everybody know I do read that very often. But what, what we don't know as people, we don't deserve an alderman or a city councilman. Those things are, we do audits and revolutions, we take care of police and bikes. We make budgets for street party, we appropriate your tax dollars. We do, we take care of senior employees. We also appropriate and make, have good use of your tax dollars. But the most important thing that we do is, is the annual budget. It has to be done probably by December the thirty-first day, maybe give us a grace to be there until January the thirty-first. Now, about me, what I want to do. I wanna continue to promote Pine Bluff. I wanna continue to ask businesses, the mayors, and the Chamber of Commerce and the lawyers, bring jobs. To bring in restaurants, places of recreation for our youth. Name the, you know, the youth are always having something else to do. But you have to understand something, aldermen and city councilmen don't do that. We can only make a suggestion to that. So those are the things I'm going to do. Now we also have your concern. If you call us, we're gonna try to get your problem to the right department. If you've got a hole in your street, we're gonna call the street department. Now mind you, if the street department don't fix that hole, the alderman can't fix it, or the city council member can't fix it. We can only report what the wrong, where the wrong is. I've had people call my street being swept, you know, that means something through. Okay, thank you all very much.
Mr. Proctor.
Alright, so my name is Martellius Proctor, and I am a recent graduate of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. And I have, I am basically a product of Pine Bluff. I've been a huge advocate for the city of Pine Bluff ever since I, you know, was able to speak. Um, and what we're really faced with today is that Pine Bluff is severely, severely, and in particularly, war for us, severely underserved. Um, there have been many times to where a lot of the investment doesn't, you know, fourth ward doesn't see any type of investment. Uh, and I'm running to change that because we have a, a, a huge asset here in the fourth ward, which is the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, and we aren't utilizing it properly. So when you go to the polls, make sure, uh, if you reside in the war for, make sure you select and elect Martellius Proctor for your next fourth ward city councilman. Thank you.
Mr. Holcomb.
My name is Lloyd Holcomb Jr.
My name is Lloyd Holcomb Jr. I have been on the city council for three terms. I have served this city with dignity and honesty, with honesty. I proudly serve this First Ward where we have seen progress, and progress continues to be done. You have the casino that is in the First Ward, you got the Marriott Hotel that is covered in the First Ward, you have the Southeastern States that's covered in the First Ward, you have the street skate, you have the library, other projects. If I do that by myself, no, we'd give that with the help of the mayor and the city councils, but most of all, the help of the citizens of the First Ward and Pinalup. I am a servant, and that's what all, it's all about being on the city council. When I decided to run for office twelve years ago, I knew it's not about a title, I knew it's not being about a public star sacrifice to serve the citizens of Pinalup. I humbly ask you to cast your vote, Master Phil, for Lloyd Holcomb Jr., First Ward City Council for another term, because progress must continue to be done, working with our mayor, who has done a fantastic job towards it, who I endorse this way. Pinalup, we must continue to work.
Alright, bad and cleanup, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bruce Lockett?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bruce Lockett, your Fourth Ward City Councilman. I'm so proud to be a councilman, holding City Council. We've had our struggles, but I think we suffer from one thing, I think that we dream too big. And I think that sometimes we dream in silos where we're not connected. So if given a fourth term, you'll see great things from Pinalup through partnership and collaboration. There are so many great resources and assets in this city, they only suffer from one thing, they are not connected. I tell my, my, my colleagues all the time, the JP don't talk to the Alderman, the Alderman don't talk to the school board members, the school board members don't talk to the state reps. So it keeps going. So my dream and my vision for this great community is put us all around the table. Let's see what we all can contribute to make this town the best city it can be. I grew up in Pinalup, and I tell your people, there is nowhere on God's green earth I would have wanted to grow. I grew up two blocks from UAPB, ten blocks from Townsend Park, I had a boys and girls club, I had a supportive community, that I am where I am because I stand on the shoulders of great people that saw great things in me. And I wanna be that same type of thing for our young people. And I look out at this audience, and I've worked with so many people, partnered, collaborated, and I wanna continue that. And therefore, if you vote for me, Bruce Lockett, as continually as your Fourth Ward Alderman, look to great things. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Lockett, William Fells, Kenneth Gray Senior, Marlette Bowles, Glenn Brown Senior, Martellius Proctor, and Lloyd Holcomb, we thank you so much. For throwing your hand in the ring, to hack the ring to serve this great city, we appreciate the sacrifice you made, let's give them a big round of applause for their efforts here tonight, thank you. We're gonna take a, a short break here while we get ready for our mayoral candidates. I hope you will take an oppor- this opportunity to meet some of these city council, uh, candidates here, talk to them about some things, we will continue, uh, about seven o'clock or so. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll ring the bell when we're about ready to start with our mayoral candidates. And there is some water in the back of the room in case anybody is placed.